Everybody.
Yeah, no. This is not the subject we're in. No, I can add some plans. How about that? You know, if you're leaning on your churches instead of inviting to random churches, then you should invite your own church. Talk about what you want.
The rest is the same.
Snowy too. Yeah, sure. I could catch it if it's that close.
Hi, how are you? Hi, everybody. Long time. It's been a while, kind of. Not really, but I guess. Huh? I haven't quite admitted that.
Why don't you change a law? Oh, if that's our special case?
Um, it would be pretty proud. People have everyone up there.
Well, we can try. Just know that you're not.
And we need to make sure that the ASL.
Okay. Well, they're on murder. And I definitely think for murder, she's gonna stand up for him. She looked out in the labor town. Great crowd.
Oh, maybe. Oh, I don't know. It's nice. She lives here. That's perfect. Then that way you're actually very likely to.
No way.
Thanks. Okay. Over and over again. Oh, that's tough.
No. One is.
And then y'all come in. I'm not even fine. I just, we just need to be with. How are you? I was just gonna say, wait, there you go. I think the way sounded that people didn't sound or work much. They probably were prior. We're gonna practice this more on Tuesday. Yeah. This'll be a good reminder of what we need to. Hope you love fun.
You gotta be inside the black line. You gotta be. We got him in shot. Nice is right behind us.
Yeah, we got this. We got, we gotta be tighter than we think.
Yes.
It's like choir. You gotta be closer than you think.
Can we practice our choreography?
What? Yeah, that's true, yeah.
We'll give them furniture.
Here's a nice move. So you get closer to it. I like your bat earrings.
Yeah, those are.
Happy Halloween. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning and thank you for being here. I am Cindy Munson. I'm the state representative for House District 85 and the House Democratic Leader. Starting tomorrow, nearly 700,000 Oklahomans, mostly children, elderly veterans, and people with disabilities, will lose their SNAP benefits due to the federal government shutdown. As we stand here this morning, we are fully aware of the furloughs that have been announced to thousands of Oklahomans as recently as Wednesday. While we cannot control the dysfunction happening in Washington, we can lead in our state, and now is the time. The person who holds the most power in Oklahoma to provide relief to Oklahomans is our governor, and that is why we are calling on Governor Stitt to declare a state of emergency, to call the legislature into a special session to use rainy day funds to help Oklahomans as they encounter stormy days ahead. We have seen Republican and Democratic governors across this country tap into their emergency funds to support food banks and other organizations to ensure the citizens in their states do not go hungry. Governor Stitt should do the same thing right here in Oklahoma. The governor has touted the billions of dollars in savings that we have, and yet will not use a single dollar to help his constituents. He is patting himself on the back for not being able to put another cent into our rainy day funds because they are so full, all while leaving the stomachs of Oklahomans empty. While we cannot access every dollar of the rainy day fund, we can access up to 300 million of those dollars and deploy them to the two largest food banks in our state to feed hungry Oklahomans. The Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma provides one meal for every nine meals SNAP provides. They are doing the work, but cannot fill the gap with SNAP unavailable. Both the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma and the Food Bank of Eastern Oklahoma have said that additional five and a half million dollars to each organization would double their efforts to get food on the tables of Oklahomans across our state. This is a clear and affordable way to help, for us to help our shared constituents. So my question to the governor, out of 300 million dollars, don't you believe it's worth it for us to use 11 million to provide relief, even if temporarily, to ensure our constituents do not go hungry? And let me address the issue of the federal government not reimbursing the state should we use our own emergency funds. First, that is a cruel and intentional choice made by our federal leaders and should be remembered. Second, anytime we need to tap into our rainy day funds, we would never expect the federal government to refill those accounts. We, as state legislators, would decide whether or not to refill those funds with our own state dollars in a regular session. No reimbursement from the federal government is simply an excuse. And make no mistake, this is a human crisis, but is also an economic crisis. The halting of SNAP benefits also means it hits our local and state economy. Grocery stores and local farmers markets will feel this impact, especially with an influx of food being stocked for Thanksgiving. Those items left on the shelf will become more and more expensive for every Oklahoman in this state. Even in an economic downturn, every SNAP dollar used generates nearly $2 in economic activity. It makes economic sense for us to make this investment now. Oklahomans don't have the luxury of waiting on politicians in Washington. They need help right now. Hunger could care less if you are a Democrat, a Republican, if you live in urban Oklahoma or rural Oklahoma. Hunger is hunger, and it is preventable, but it's up to the governor to act. Our governor and attorney general could also join other states in suing the Trump administration for withholding federal funds to keep aid flowing to Oklahoma during this government shutdown. They can show Oklahomans right now that they stand with us, not the dysfunction happening in Washington. Now is not the time to cling to the talking points of the White House. It is time for our state's leaders to stand up, lead, and to serve Oklahomans. The governor has said everything is on the table. Great. We're ready to sit at the table and get to a solution. We've named at least two here today. This is a choice he is making, and we can choose differently, and now is the time.
I'm Senator Julia Kurt. I'm the senator for Senate District 30 in Oklahoma City. I'm also the minority leader in the Senate. Thank you to Leader Munson, to the House. We stand jointly to show how urgent this is. We stand ready to come into special session as soon as possible. We are showing up, and we're great. Congressional leaders and the president need to stop using hungry kids as political pawns. They need to come to the table and work out solutions. There are limits on the state funds we can use. Have to come into a special session to be ready to do that. We can appropriate as many dollars as are available to make sure children can be fed while we wait on Washington DC. Republican leaders in Oklahoma need to step up for children. They left our children at risk by not preparing for this. We have known this was coming. Call for solutions, and here we are with those benefits being cut off tomorrow, and we have no plan. Other states have found clear solutions for temporary fixes. May not be perfect, but it doesn't matter. We're calling on Republicans to do so too. We need their courage in these important times. A huge number of our SNAP recipients are children and people with disabilities. Oklahoma families are more important than political points. Just want to tell a story from my social media page when I posted about SNAP. A woman posted this. After 30 years of work, I lost the use of my hands. I stopped being able to work, and SNAP is how I put food on the table now. People keep saying I should get a job so I can eat. I wish I could work, but I can't. She wants to work, but she can't. These are the reasons we have SNAP, so that we can help cover that gap, and we're one of the biggest states impacted by the cutoff. As elected officials, it's our duty to take care of our constituents. Our caucus stands ready with the House Democrats to put forward real solutions, no matter how hard they are to make sure we show up for those families and that kids don't go hungry this month. As soon as next week, people are gonna have to choose between rent and food. I am not gonna let children starve in this state if I have anything to say about it, and I know my caucus and the House Democrats stand with me on that.
Good morning. I'm Representative Ron Stewart of Tulsa, representing House District 73 and the Chair for the Oklahoma Legislative Black Caucus. And so I just want to say thank you to Leader Munson and Leader Kurt for allowing me to speak on behalf, especially District 73. I don't believe that it can be overstated that we are talking about nearly 700,000 Oklahomans, many of which are our most vulnerable residents, and I don't think that that can be overstated. House District 73 will be among the hardest hit simply by the nature of our demographic makeup, especially in the North West Tulsa area. Our community is made up of diverse families who rely on SNAP benefits at a disproportionately high rate. The long grocery store that we have in what is virtually a food desert is a small privately-owned business that will undoubtedly feel the impact of reduced sales. The challenges that House District 73 faces are really synonymous with that of rural Oklahoma. Many of those rural communities across Oklahoma may be different in geography, but the struggle is the same. Families throughout our state are going to feel the same pain. During the Wednesday press conference, we heard what the governor described, the finding of fund strings as complicated. I assure you to the hundreds of thousands of Oklahomans who are about to go hungry, it is not complicated, it is very much essential. And the prospect of being reimbursed by the federal government is not something that ranks very highly on their list of priorities. With November 1st on the horizon, time has effectively run out. We cannot afford to wait for more harm before taking decisive action. While this is clearly a humanitarian crisis, it is also a matter of public safety. Oklahomans will suffer, and we must recognize the ways that some may respond to food and security, which carry a broader implication for our communities. This reality should concern every legislator of this state. As elected officials, we have a duty and obligation to the people we serve, people who have entrusted us to represent their best interests. Our people need help now. There is a real, we have real solutions as a legislature that we can consider in a special session to provide relief and stability for Oklahoma families. I believe calling for swift, decisive action for the legislative body to ensure that no Oklahoman goes hungry is not only in the best interest of its people, but it's a reflection of our collective consciousness and our commitment to responsible governance. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nikki Nice. I am the state senator for Senate District 48, and I am currently serving as the vice-chair of the Oklahoma Legislative Black Caucus, and I would also like to thank our minority leaders for allowing me this time and this opportunity to speak. What has already been said cannot be overstated. I think it's very important for us to realize and honor, as we just heard from Representative Stewart, if you go one mile east of this Capitol right now, there is one full-service grocery store. And that speaks to how our community will have to respond in this immediate crisis that we are experiencing right now. And I think it's very important for us to also realize the stress and the strain that our food banks, our churches, food pantries, and all nonprofits are already experiencing because of inflation costs of food. Our president ran on the guise of lowering those costs of food, and now we're relying on food pantries to give us food. So what are we supposed to do? That is why we're asking for action, and I think it's important to understand that 66% of our Oklahoma households rely on those SNAP benefits, and they have children. And we also need to look at one in six Oklahomans received SNAP benefits the last year. That's just last year. And as we look at our senior pantries, and we're asking and calling for volunteers and asking for us to call 211 and all of these other resources, guess what? They need funding too. So as our state legislature has cut the funding mechanism for 211, we're stressing their phone lines and asking them to respond in this need of crisis. So what happens now? What happens next? When we look at our mental health crisis, we just funded and had a few conversations about what that loss looks like for our state and the people who need that immediate service for mental health concerns. We look at all of our Restore OKC. We look at their small community market that's also located in the community, and they're asking for help. So what are we supposed to do in the need of this crisis? We can come back to the legislature and make sure we have others available for Oklahomans in need. That is the ask, and I am grateful that we do have folks that are within our communities, specifically Senate District 48, Corey Smith, Corey B. Cookin, also Najah Wipes Kitchen, Restore OKC, and countless others. I have pastors that are within the community asking for our churches to bring canned goods so we can distribute them on the 15th, because as we look at November 1st, what happens on the 15th? What happens after the 15th? What happens on Thanksgiving? What happens to our Oklahoma families? So there is something that can be done, and we are calling on the governor as well as our leadership on the Republican side to help us continue to feed Oklahomans. So just to give you some more information, USDA has advised states that SNAP benefits will be suspended by the federal government again on tomorrow, November 1st of 2025. Oklahoma Department of Human Services expects the suspension to continue until the federal shutdown is resolved. And as I said, you can call 211 or the nearest food benefits. Text your zip code to 877-836-2111. And if you need official Oklahoma updates, please visit okdhs.org/shutdown. And I want to also end with the fact that we just heard on the news within the last couple of days that over 2,300 employees that work for the state will be furloughed. What are we supposed to do about that? We need to feed Oklahomans, and we need our folks to be ready for this crucial time as we are about to experience something we have never experienced before.
You take a question?
Um, this is for anyone. What is your message to Oklahomans who utilize SNAP benefits, who are saying, is there a light at the end of the tunnel?
I encourage all Oklahomans who are concerned about this to immediately reach out to our federal delegation. We have five congresspeople. We have two U.S. senators who need to come to the table. We don't want media messages. We want them to actually take action. And then secondarily, I would encourage them to call the governor and call their legislators to ask them to take action now for a temporary fix. We know any state fix is temporary. We cannot keep it up. We know that it's too much money, but they need to ask for action from their people. We have never seen a shutdown go much longer than now. Could it go longer? Yes. I think we have to be prepared, and so we need to show Oklahomans that we actually have a strategy and a plan, and we hope that they're demanding that.
Are you all asking for the funds to be put into the food banks or be put into the SNAP program? Just kind of clarifying that.
Both. We would prefer money go out through SNAP benefit cards, but we're being told that might be too complex or would take longer. We need immediate relief to our food banks, and then we need to get working on how we can get money on those cards so that folks that already have proven they're eligible and are low income can get access to those benefits.
Yeah, I would just add specifically to the question about the EBT cards. I know that there was a vendor, the National Governors Association, to provide some guidance on how states could set up, whether that's separate funds or figuring out a pathway to get state dollars onto those EBT cards. And so it is possible, Louisiana, the state of Virginia, run by the way, led by Republican governors, have figured out a way, so our governor can figure out a way. But right now, as Leader Kurt said, every option's on the table. We have money to make a temporary fix, a temporary fix, and giving to food banks or giving straight to those SNAP beneficiaries is a possibility. We could figure it out.
I do want to add one thing, which is we talk a lot about the rainy day fund, but we actually have 117 million dollars in cash from last year and this year's fiscal budget. Set aside for some future time, not even encumbered in our rainy day fund. We can use those money. All we have to do is have a special session and appropriate. There are already certified funds available to the legislature. 117 million could go a long way to fill this gap.
I'd also highlight one more thing in terms of temporary fixes. The chief of the Cherokee Nation, as he proposed the millions of dollars that he's helping to help Cherokee citizens, that this will be provided, and if the government reopens and SNAP benefits are available again, then the funds that the Cherokee Nation provide will stop. So there are solutions. Leaders have figured it out, and again, I think we can do that too.
Outside of a special session, have you heard any discussions about the constituent review board possibly meeting with the governor, president, and speaker about outside of session?
I haven't. And I, you know, we know that the federal funding coming in doesn't affect our general revenue immediately, so it reduces the amount of options we have, which is why we have to have a special session and/or an emergency declaration and a special session.
What is the reality if the special session doesn't happen, if you don't get what you're looking for here for the temporary fix?
I mean, I think we're gonna see people struggling. What I anticipate, I spent the day yesterday riding with Oklahoma County sheriffs who are evicting people from homes because they can't afford their rent. I think we're gonna see more people making those difficult choices. People are already working one or two jobs if they're physically able. Most of the people on SNAP are children, so I think what we're gonna see is children not having their next meal. We know the trauma that causes. It changes kids' chemistry to be worried about their next meal forever. Thank goodness our schools are solid. Their programs for free breakfast, free lunch are continuing, and everyone needs to access that. If you don't already have it and your income has changed, you can become eligible for free and reduced lunch immediately if you turn in paperwork to your school. So talk to your school district. If you've had a change in your income, your furlough, you can go to them for help. Thank goodness our schools are staying solid.
Have any of you had conversations with Republican leadership about a special session? If so, have they expressed any interest in that?
They, all of what I have seen so far is that they're saying it can't be done. I know the Oklahoman highlighted a story by one of the majority leaders in the Republican caucus in the House that said, we just can't do it, we can't sustain it. And what I would say, my response to that is that we are not asking for a permanent plan. We understand it's not sustainable. What we're asking for is a temporary fix, at least get us through the next month. Let us help Oklahomans. Let's work together to find a way. And it seems like they're just digging their heels in more and more and saying that there's no possible way when that's just not true.
And I'll say the conversations I've had, I do know there's senators working on it. However, we're not seeing solutions. Here we are the day before the cutoff, and so anything they're working on at this point is late, and it has not been communicated publicly. There's public panic about this. People are very concerned, and so we need to see leadership in public about what our strategies and solutions are. So I thank my colleagues for working on it, but we need to see the action now.
Could you provide some clarity on who exactly stands to lose benefits starting tomorrow? You know, do you just put out an announcement saying that existing members are still?
Oh, on childcare?
All right. Thank you. I would have to go back.
I know. There's a lot happening right now on this day. I think when you look at the breakdown of specifically SNAP beneficiaries, those who receive SNAP, like Senator Nice mentioned, 66%, so nearly half a million are children. And so their families are also going to be impacted. You know, I think a lot of times a misconception is that these folks aren't working. Well, are you gonna go tell a child to get a job so that they can get fed? You know, these are people who are in vulnerable situations, who lose jobs, who have disabilities, of veterans. There are a number of veterans who are receiving SNAP benefits, and I can personally speak to that in some ways. And so, you know, these are people, these are most vulnerable populations that are doing everything they can, and many of them, by the way, are working. These are working Oklahomans. And we can get in the conversation about living wages and how we take care of people as they go to work every day, and they're not working one job, they're working multiple jobs. So to the question about what's gonna happen, it's just going to increase stress over time and make things more and more difficult. And for those who, especially our colleagues on the other side of the aisle who like to just look at numbers, the costs of the services that we're gonna have to provide after this are going to become more and more expensive because we don't do the work for prevention now.
And do you want to talk childcare for a minute?
Sure.
I mean, if anyone wants to add, you can, but what was announced yesterday by the Department of Human Services? The Oklahoma State Department of Human Services is not receiving some of their federal funding, and they did announce a cut to reimbursements for school-aged children, so that's ages six and up, and they took away a supplement that's been there since COVID to try to help our childcare centers survive, because we are losing childcare centers right and left. People can't work if their kids aren't safe, and so I think we're gonna see a real problem with after-school, before-school. They're going to hold new applicants for school-aged kids getting that supplement. So you're gonna see families that are trying to juggle working and getting their kid picked up from school or safely to school, and I think we're gonna see a lot of folks that are gonna have to pull back from the workforce. These supplements make all the difference for childcare's business model. We need child cares to survive, and they've been on a break since COVID.
Do you know of any other states outside of DHS that are planning furloughs that get a lot of federal funding?
Maybe it's up to our, we haven't heard anything officially. And I do want to mention those employees that are being furloughed, you know, because traditionally they wouldn't have access to many benefits anyways, but they would at least be able to access SNAP benefits if it weren't times like these. So even now with those 20-plus thousand state employees that are furloughed can't even access SNAP benefits because of where we're at with the federal government shutdown.
I do know the Department of Rehabilitation Services has a division that's 100% federally funded. The legislature and OMS did authorize them in advance to cover the first month of a shutdown for those employees, and I know that my constituents have not heard from the agency what's gonna happen in November, so there's a lot of anxiety about how they're gonna cover their bills in November. Now, it may be that they'll be able to access more money because that's a smaller number of employees. I believe it's in the 200s, so it's not huge like the number of DHS employees. But what we're seeing is state employees at risk, which is just gonna add in the number of people who need it. which is just going to add to the number of people who need help. All right. Thanks so much for coming this morning. We appreciate you all. Thank you to our sign language interpreter. Very much appreciate our ASL interpreter. And hope that we can keep communicating.
Thanks for being here.